Hello and welcome candidates to this candidate forum. I'm Duhah Toewill, member of the League of Women Voters in Johnson County, and I will be the moderator for this forum. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer, nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes any party or candidate. The League does take positions after considerable study of issues and acts to influence decision makers on those issues. We do not only register voters, but also provide them with information on issues to assist their participation in government. Membership is open to anyone 16 years of age or older. Join us, we could use your time and your talent. League members advocate and inform voters. Democracy works best when more people are involved. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates. All candidates have been invited to participate. The format for this evening is as follows. After candidates have been introduced, they will each have two minutes for opening remarks. We will then present questions to them. Our first questions come from the League's members. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. There will be no time for rebuttals. We are scheduled for one hour. Near the end of our scheduled time for this event, each candidate will have two minutes for closing remarks. A League member, C.C. Roudabush, is our timekeeper, using cards to alert candidates when time is up and when it is about up and when it is up. The election is scheduled for November 2nd, and early voting begins on October 13th. Requests for vote by mail ballots are currently being accepted by the Johnson County Auditor's Office. Alright, so we have four candidates for three at-large seats on the Corleville City Council. Our candidates are Ms. Lori Goodrich, Ms. Hai Nguyen, Mr. Mike Knudsen, and Ms. Cindy Riley. There is one candidate running for mayor, Ms. Megan Foster. Let's begin with your two-minute opening statements, starting with the mayoral candidate, followed by the four councilmember candidates. Ms. Foster.
Thank you very much. Hello, everyone. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight. I'd like to thank my fellow candidates for participating, and thank you to everyone who is watching at home. My name is Megan Foster, and I am running to be the next mayor of Corleville. So just a little bit about me. My husband Nick and I have lived in Corleville for 20 years. I'm the mother of five children, ranging in age from 21 years old to eight years old. I work as the Community Engagement Coordinator for the Domestic Violence Intervention Program, and I'm an educator at the University of Iowa School of Journalism and Mass Communication. I was first elected to the Corleville City Council in 2017, and I serve on several local boards and commissions, including the Johnson County Metropolitan Planning Organization, the Johnson County Juvenile Justice and Youth Development Policy Board, and the Corleville Food Pantry Board of Directors. So, since I've announced my candidacy for mayor, one of the questions that I have been asked the most is about the difference between the role of the mayor and the role of the city council. And one of the technical answers to that question is that the mayor sets the agenda for the public meetings. But I also think that the mayor sets the agenda for the entire community, and she does this by having a vision of what she wants her community to be. And I am eager to share my vision for our community with you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Next, Ms. Goodrich.
Thank you, Duhah. My husband Jim and I came to the University of Iowa to start a faith-based athletic organization in 1984. And it's been a great career working with bright, young student athletes. Our three children grew up attending Corleville schools, West High and Off College, and we think they've grown into some pretty amazing adults, and they married awesome spouses. Our son, who graduated from medical school at Iowa, is a lieutenant colonel in the Air Force. And our daughter and her family have a chemical-free home products business. And our youngest son and family are in their sixth year living in northern Iraq. And they speak Kurdish in Arabic and work in relief and development to refugee camp population. I just thought it might be kind of interesting for people to know that. We have nieces and nephews that are adopted from Liberia, El Salvador, Philippines, Texas, and North Dakota Sioux. So for years, we've embraced ethnicity and cultural diversity in our family. And likewise, I'm at ease that Corleville is a diverse population with a small-town atmosphere. And even within this group of candidates, we have different experiences and goals for our community, and I'm ready to openly listen and discuss tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodrich. Next, Ms. Nguyen.
Thank you, Duhah. Hello, everyone. First off, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters of Johnson County for hosting tonight's forum. And second, I would like to thank Megan, Lori, Cindy, and Mike for choosing to embark on this journey to serve our great community. And thank you to everyone listening and watching tonight. It is an honor to be here. My name is Hai Nguyen, and I am seeking reelection to the Corleville City Council. I love Corleville. And as an immigrant who have lived here for 20 years, a full-time mom of four, and now an essential worker at the Corleville Food Pantry, I have lots of experience working with people from diverse cultural and economic backgrounds. And I believe that give me a unique insight into the true and often unseen needs of our community. In the summer of 2020, a seat became open on a Corleville City Council, and I chose to run in order to serve my community in a new way. And I was thrilled to discover that so many of my neighbors share the same hope and vision for a better Corleville. And thanks to your support, I became the first Vietnamese-American elected to any office in the state of Iowa. One year later, I see myself more informed about the processes and procedure and more emboldened than ever to fight for what is right, no matter what. Going forward, my highest priority is to collectively create a Corleville that puts everybody first. My focus for the second term includes relief for our neighbors who were hit the hardest by the pandemic, racial and economic justice, inclusive and affordable development, community mobility, and climate action. I look forward to talking about these and other priorities tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Next, Mr. Knudsen.
I too would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. Certainly, as a first-time candidate, appreciate having this opportunity to introduce myself to Corleville residents. About me personally, my wife and I have lived in Corleville over 20 years, raise both our daughters here. My wife has been in education at the university and is currently in the College of Dentistry. I also work at the university and professor in the Department of Pathology. I'm a physician scientist. Currently, I'm the Medical Director of the University of Iowa Hospitals and Clinics, Blood Bank, and Donor Center. Done a wide variety of research over the years, including research in cancer, transfusion medicine, and COVID-19. And in fact, last year, I initiated the convalescent plasma program at UIC, which has been used to treat over 130 patients with COVID-19. For fun, I enjoy golfing at Brown Deer. And as an avid recreational commuter biker, certainly enjoy the trails around Corleville and the area. About my experience with Corleville. I have roughly 15 years of volunteer experience in Corleville, including a current member of the Corleville Planning and Zoning Commission, a former member of the Corleville Board of Adjustment, a former member of the Parks and Rec Commission. During that time, I proposed the Corleville Community Garden, which I'm proud to say remains in use today. And I also participated in the Corleville Citizens Academy. My thoughts on the future of Corleville, very briefly to start. I believe the city of Corleville on balance has been heading in the right direction. The city is growing rapidly due to the many attractions and job opportunities in the area. It's a great place to live, work, and raise a family. And I think the growth reflects that. Over the past 10-plus years, the city revamped the polluted industrial zone, which was the main gateway to the city, and turned it into a retail and entertainment destination that is the envy of many other cities. This does not mean there are not additional opportunities to improve our city and make Corleville the best place in Iowa and the nation to live. And I look forward to discussing these opportunities with the other candidates throughout this forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knudsen. And Ms. Riley.
So I really want to say too, thank you for the League for setting this up for us. They always do such a great job of involving the community and staying involved in the issues that are important to us all. So thank you very much for that, and thank you for all the participants. So my name is Cindy Altmaier Riley, and I would like to be part of the Corleville City Council. I grew up on a farm just south of Corleville. A little bit about myself. I have a master's degree from Iowa State University, and I've worked 30 years in small and large businesses around the country. I currently own a small business here in Corleville, so I strongly believe that Corleville is worth investing in. So I have a long history in Corleville. I attended Northwest Junior High and West High School, class of '79. I have a lot of long-term memories of the things that we did in Corleville over the years. Going all the way back to drive-in movie theaters and, you know, playing in the parks in town. My three daughters spent hours playing in S.T. Morrison Park, and I sincerely hope that my four grandchildren will have that same opportunity. So those are the kind of memories I'd like residents of Corleville to have the opportunity to create. So it is possible with the Corleville City Council, there's been great focus over the last 20, 30, 40 years on making the city a nice place to live and have really contributed to the growth and development of the community. And I want to commend them on the work that they have done. So I think that I would like to continue that work. I have my business background, I think, is important to me and to this role. We should promote financially stable and environmentally friendly businesses to Corleville. I do want to be sure that we support the residents adequately in terms of affordable housing, childcare, and other services that make a great life. I love the outdoors, so Corleville does such a nice job celebrating a life, outdoor lifestyle, and great recreational activities. So thank you very much. I appreciate this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Now we will proceed to questions. We invite members of the audience to put your questions in the chat, and I will ask those of the candidates. We will start with the questions from the League. Recall that you have one minute to respond to each question. The first question I will be asking is, what is motivating you to run for city council? And we will start with Ms. Goodrich.
Okay. This will be my third time running, and I've been on city council for almost eight years now, two terms. And what motivates me is a commitment to capitalize on Corleville's strengths and the work that we've already done and advancing current goals and have a positive impact on the lives of Corleville residents. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen.
Thank you, Duhah. What motivated me to run for city council is I believe that the people who represent, you know, in local government should look like the people who they represent. I have been in the community for 20 years. I have seen a lot of good things, but a lot of not-so-good things in my community. And I would love to have a chance to help improve the life of people who call Corleville home just like myself and my family. And I believe that, you know, having people who invested not only their time, but their energy and their resources in our community will strengthen it. And that is the reason why I am motivated to run. Thank you.
Mr. Knudsen.
Sure. So I think deciding to run in part hinged on my long experience as a volunteer on a variety of boards and commission. I admittedly am an empty nester now. Have a little more time to commit to this. I know being on the city council gives me opportunity to even have a bigger influence on the direction of the city. And I felt this was a great opportunity to try and do that. I think Corleville's, like I said at the beginning, is heading in the right direction, but there's certainly some opportunities to continue to expand. I'll mention those as they come up later. Thank you.
Ms. Riley.
Yeah, what motivates me to run? You know, I've seen the progress that Corleville's made over the last 30 or 40 years, and it's very impressive. And so I'd like to continue that development and make sure that we can continue to balance the growth and development in Corleville with the needs of the residents when it comes to things like, you know, good wages and opportunities here close to home, transportation, so people can get to a good job, and childcare, so that they can, you know, have support in the home as they move through their time here in Corleville. So I really want to be able to focus and keep some focus on that balance of continuing to grow our business and creating opportunities for the residents here in Corleville. Thank you.
And Ms. Foster.
Thank you. Well, the reason I was motivated to run the first time in 2017 is because I love Corleville. And, you know, in the four years that I have served on the council, it has brought me a tremendous amount of joy to serve my community in this capacity. I am extremely proud of a lot of the progress that we have made over the last four years. And I also give a tremendous amount of credit to the colleagues that I serve with on how much that progress has moved forward. While I am proud of what we have accomplished, there's still a lot left to do. I want to create a community where everyone feels welcomed and included and safe. I want to create a community where everyone has the ability to build a life that is happy and healthy and safe the same way that I've been able to for the last 20 years. And I want to make sure that we are providing resources for our residents.
Thank you all. A nice segue to our next question. How would you foster a positive working relationship to ensure that community concerns are being met? And first, we will start with Ms. Nguyen. Ms. Nguyen.
Thank you. Took me a while to find the unmute button. I believe that in order to get our citizens to involve in our city, we, you know, we cannot rely and continue to expect people with limited resource to participate in city government without support. We must come to them and work to ensure that they have a voice at the table. And it will require resources to do so, but it is unnecessary if we are serious about building inclusive community. We also need to invest in neighborhood and community development by partnering with people and organization based in marginalized community. And we also must lean on community-based organization and neighborhood ambassador to increase civic participation. Thank you.
Mr. Knudsen.
Yeah, this is a great question. Corleville residents have, you know, plenty of opportunities to participate in our government, as I've done, and, you know, to show up at council meetings and comment. For me, I think one of the keys to kind of feel how the residents are perceiving the city is to work very closely with the leaders in city government. They're the ones who get the compliments and who get the complaints. And, you know, with that in mind, I've already initiated conversations with a number of our city leaders to identify the challenges and the opportunities that we face. And I've, just in the last few weeks, I've learned a tremendous amount. I think engaging them, making sure you're communicating with our community leaders in the various departments, you know, will help us effectively understand what is desired. Thank you.
Ms. Riley.
Alright, so I think to foster a working relationship, a lot of that starts with listening, which is, you know, hearing what the residents have to say and what their concerns are. Now, it's also creating situations where you can bring together people in the community, which I think Corleville has done a good job at, and we need to continue. You know, simple things like the recreational leagues and the amazing parks we have, and the Fourth of July festival, and the kind of things that just bring people out and have them feel like they're part of the community. I think that's very important. And then we on the council, being out with that community, listening and talking to the people of community and hearing what they have to say. So I think that listening and building relationships is essential for us going forward. Thank you.
Ms. Foster.
Thank you. Well, I believe that communication is a two-way street, and I think we need to make sure that as city leaders, we are actively reaching out and seeking feedback from our constituents. And also taking a look at who is included in the conversations that we're having and who is left out. And really making sure that we are investing in reaching all of the constituents and making sure that they feel comfortable coming and approaching their city leaders. So we need to make sure that we have a welcoming environment for the community to do outreach. I also think those partnerships with community organizations, nonprofits, these are key in making sure that our constituents have everything that they need.
And lastly, Ms. Goodrich.
And just to take a quick, realistic approach, I just think that amid the great losses and daily uncertainties of COVID, that our leadership has adapted to continue the city services, such as public safety, water, sewer, garbage pickup, transit service, and street maintenance. We adjusted schedules and put stringent safety protocols in place. Just examples of how we've been on top of the pandemic, so to speak. And even with the deracial storm, I'm just so proud of Corleville's can-do spirit and enabling us to get all that work done. And within a week, everything picked up and removed. So I just give a great shout-out and hats-off to our administrators and human resource and finance department for monitoring the situation. And I just believe that we continue to have to work on this. And I look forward to all the funding that will come available that we can work with. Thanks.
Okay, so now we are going to go to the third question, and that is, the city of Corleville was allocated $3.3 million in federal funds provided by the American Rescue Plan Act, otherwise known as ARPA. What criteria would you suggest in deciding how to spend this money? How do you feel we can best help our community recover from the effects of COVID-19? And we will begin with Mr. Knudsen.
Thank you. It's actually news to me. I didn't know we got $3.3 million with, I guess we get to spend as we wish. Why, there's so many opportunities that we could use for that. We've talked about some of them already, you know, activities that bring the community together. Don't know if this money needs to be targeted for something related to COVID or not. Certainly, there are certain families and populations that have been more affected by COVID, so there might be opportunities to target the money in those directions. You know, I guess I'm not sure if there's limits on this funding or not. Certainly, certain areas of the community that need to be updated infrastructure-wise. Love to improve our water, is one example. Those are my initial thoughts on how we could use that.
Ms. Riley.
Alright, so this is a great question, because it kind of feeds into one of my top priorities, which is, you know, making sure that we promote business development and ways for people in Corleville to raise families in a nice Iowa community. So we need to look at ways and whether we've properly addressed affordable housing, affordable childcare. Those are key to getting people out of this pandemic, which I should pause for a minute and say, you know, a lot of us have lost people during the pandemic, and, you know, greatest sympathy for everybody in the community who has. But we need to be out there saying, let's make sure that we have addressed affordable housing. Let's make sure we have childcare, and let's make sure that we can focus on bringing a good wage and good-paying job so people can raise their families successfully here.
Ms. Foster.
Thank you. So I have three priorities for our ARPA funding. Number one, restore our revenue loss that we experienced last year due to a reduction in our hotel-motel tax revenue. When we lose revenue, we lose services. We actually had to cut jobs, we had to cut programming, and we had to cut services because of that revenue loss. So if we restore the funding, we can restore those services that our constituents need. In addition, I'd like to see another portion of the money set aside for a social services and affordable housing fund. And then finally, I'd like to see some of the funds go towards payments to an excluded workers' fund.
Ms. Goodrich.
Thank you. I touched on it a little bit on the last question, and that the American Rescue Fund Plan, the funding that we received really isn't very much in order to use very creatively when it comes to, as Megan mentioned, the revenue losses that we had. But just in my few minutes, or one minute that I'd like to share, I'm just so pleased with the Johnson County enabling funds to go toward people who are in need financially and programs that they have enabled through their ARPA funds. And also, I would like to see our food pantry in Corleville expanded. And I would like to see some of the funds go toward that. Thanks.
Ms. Nguyen.
Thank you. I would like to prioritize the American Rescue Fund, the American Rescue Plan funding to support, you know, first of all, strengthening the Social Services Agency that we have in our community. Right now, we have one, and they showed a lot for the past two years that we are in the pandemic, and they continue to do so. If we can expand their services to help our residents, that would be super helpful. My next focus will be on mortgage and rental assistance for community members who fall through the crack, who cannot find work, who cannot work during COVID in order to make payment. And then also, funding, allocate funding to help small businesses, especially BIPOC-owned businesses in our community. And my next, my last one would be to provide some funding for workers who have been excluded from the past and ongoing federal and state relief. They have been contributing on the front light. They kept our society going.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Alright, thank you all. We are now on our fourth question, and that is, tax increment financing, or TIF. So TIF is a public financing method that is used as a subsidy for redevelopment, infrastructure, or other community improvement projects. The city diverts future property tax revenue toward an economic development project. The city of Corleville has used this financing method to fund several city projects. What do you see as the pros and cons of this kind of financing? What should the city of Corleville expect to receive in return for TIF-funded projects? And we will begin with Ms. Riley.
Alright, so I think we all know that TIF is a complex issue, right? It has both pros and cons. So it has a So it has allowed us to do a lot of great development in Corraville, and we need to commend the city planners for doing that. However, it has put us, you know, in a debt situation that would be, where we're currently in a debt situation. I think we need to be careful on how we spend any funds going forward by the city. We do have, we do have, I don't know how much, I don't know how much leeway we have and what we can ask businesses and companies, what the two-way street should look like when it comes to TIF funding. I mean, I believe that we should help businesses grow, and we should use incentives to help them grow. But I think in return, we should also ask those businesses to occasionally look back and say, you know, how are you contributing to the city of Corraville? And what, how are you supporting our social structure in Corraville? So I think we should have an open dialogue anytime we have a TIF involved, to say, we want to have incentive, but we also want you to give back to Corraville as well. Thank you.
Ms. Foster.
Thank you so much. So Cindy is correct that TIF is an extremely complicated topic. It's one that we have been discussing for many years in the city of Corraville. I would say that the pros obviously are that we have seen a lot, a lot of the growth that we are seeing in the area is because of the investments that we have made. The Iowa River Landing is a great example. That area used to be an environmental and public health hazard. That area would not have been cleaned up the way it has been literally cleaned up without TIF. Now, having said that, I do believe that we should not be adding any land to our TIF districts, and we should just continue to focus on the areas that we do have and investing in those spaces.
Ms. Goodrich.
Thank you. I just attended an economic development meeting at the IRL League of Cities that talked specifically teaching about TIF. And as we've stated, it is somewhat complicated, but it's the least expensive way for cities to develop and the best way. And we have had some of our long-term TIF areas come off and have been able to have millions of dollars put back into the economy. And that goes back to the state and the county and also here in Corraville. And as has been stated, that's how we've been able to grow and will continue our robust community. Thank you.
Ms. Nguyen.
Thank you. Just like everybody who answered before me, TIF does have its advantage and disadvantage. And, you know, TIF had the potential to draw in new businesses and increase the city tax pay. But many would argue that it is the developer who would benefit the most and not the local community. But if we can work together to, you know, to fire TIF that benefit community member and developer and, you know, fix up areas, just like Megan has mentioned, Ms. Foster had mentioned, like the IRL, in order to come in and clean up and make that a vital area for a community member to enjoy and draw in businesses. It's also had a better incentive to promote economic development, you know, that supports stronger, strong public school, good roads and streets, good fire protection and police protection, and then other public services. These are worldwide investment that, you know, that TIF can help us get. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Knudsen.
Yeah. The pros and cons, the first thing I would do is probably sit down with Kelly Hayworth and perhaps Kevin Olson, our attorney and our administrator, to discuss all the pros and cons of TIFs. It's my impression the IRL would never have happened without a TIF. And I think, as others have said, that's fantastic. I think on balance, the TIF has very, very positive. It's an economical way to improve the city, which we've used, in my opinion, very well. I think, I believe, that the 965 improvements that we saw in the last few years can be attributed, at least in part, to the TIFs. So I see a lot, a lot of positives from the use of Corraville and the use of TIFs. Downside for Corraville, I'm not so sure. I think for the community as a whole, certainly, I believe it takes some money away from our schools, which is always a little bit of a concern. Thank you.
Thank you all. So now we are going to our fifth question, which is, would you support moving to single-stream recycling? Single-stream recycling is a system in which all recyclables, including newspaper, cardboard, plastic, aluminum, junk mail, et cetera, are placed in a single bin or cart for recycling with a wheeled bin and perhaps curbside composting. Thank you. And we will start with Ms. Foster.
Yes, I would support that. And I, we have heard from some very well-informed community members, including the moderator of our forum here tonight on this issue. We do know that it is going to take a lot to get something like this off the ground. It might take several years, but I believe that it is important to make sure that we are making it easier for our residents to recycle. So yes, I know it'll take a lot of work, I know it will take a lot of time, but I am in favor of doing that work and pursuing single-stream recycling.
Ms. Goodrich.
I've read a couple articles on this recently, and there was even one in Consumer Reports that was very intriguing. I would have to say that I'm willing to look into it more and find out more information and so on. And I would like to continue this conversation. Thanks.
Ms. Nguyen.
Thank you. Yes, I am strongly supporting single-stream recycling because we are big, we are a big recycler in our family. And I have to admit, it's been a struggle. And I also heard from a lot of community member that, you know, with how fast Corraville grow, we should have a recycling program that met that growth. And I agree. I have been working with community member, again, yourself, Daha, and talking to others, people from other city to look for solution to make recycling in Corraville less of a nuisance for people and more friendly to the environment and easier on our staff who are out collecting recycling every week. It is a long process, it is going to be a hard process, it's going to take each and every single one of us to be on board to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Knudsen.
Sure, this is another great question. Thank you. I guess I know how you feel about, about single stream from the previous answers. First thing I would do is talk to Eric Fisher, our superintendent of our solid waste program, get his perspective. I think there are a lot of cons to, you know, it makes it easier for the users, but it does create a lot of complications on his end, I would think. I certainly think we need to have an updated recycling center. Where we're doing it now, you know, it's been temporary, and we need to improve that. I'd love to see glass recycling in the city, that's something that's sorely missing. But when you have single source, from my understanding, and I'm open to a very active conversation about that, it does dirty the input a lot. It makes it easier on our end, but it makes it harder, if anything, for the workers, in my opinion. So that's why Eric's input would be critical. Thank you.
Ms. Riley.
All right, so yes, I definitely support single-stream recycling. I mean, I think we each, at an individual level, have to take personal responsibility for, you know, this environmental issue. I personally have, am working to eliminate plastic in my life completely, which you realize what a challenge that is once you undertake that. So it's not easy even for an individual to say, I want to do more for the environment. But as community, we have to clearly communicate how important it is that we do the most we can for our environment. So yes, to Megan's point, this is not a simple thing. It will take a lot of work, and it will take quite a bit of time to do. But we definitely need to start down that path. And I do like to, I think you mentioned briefly, the curbside composting. I think also that that is a great idea because I think we probably have something there that's a little easier to handle as a community, and we're not taking advantage of that today. So yes, I support. Thank you.
Thank you all. All right, so now we are going to do our last, our community question, which is, what one action did you take to benefit our community that you are most proud of? And we will start with Ms. Goodrich.
Off the top of my head, just hearing that question makes me think of our new program that we've worked hard to develop, and it's called Neighbors, Helping Neighbors. And I came up with the idea, there's so many regulations and guidelines and forms to fill out and so on for people when they are in need of help with paying for services. And we felt in our, as a city council, that we would like to help people. And the idea is that Neighbors Helping Neighbors, neighbors can give to a fund and that will help people in our community who are trouble paying their water and trash, garbage bills. So they can just apply for that and get payment for the month for their water bills. And it's something that we as individuals can give to on an ongoing basis, or just give a gift, whatever, to help our neighbors. Thanks.
Ms. Nguyen.
One action, the one action that I am most proud of is being in the front line, working, supporting my community through the pandemic. And in that position, I get to hear story, I get to listen to my community members, I get to hear their heartbreak, their triumph, I get to witness the adversity that they overcome, I get to hug them, you know, when they, when they are able to get back on their two feet. I talk to real people every day and see how they overcome their challenges, how they are so grateful for the help that they can get, you know, whether through neighbors or through social services that available in our community, or really just by asking for help from a stranger. That is one of the proudest thing that I have been doing in my community. Thank you.
Mr. Knudsen.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of things I'm professionally proud of in terms of my career. I already mentioned establishing a convalescent plasma program and, you know, a lot of work on identifying new treatments for cancer over the years. But I think it was specifically for the community, and I mentioned this too. I do want to give our citizens, you know, the opportunity to garden, those who don't. And I propose that to our Parks and Rec Commission, and I have to give Sherry Proud and her team credit for implementing it. But we did get a community gardens implemented that's available to all Corraville residents. And, you know, that's been in use since that time. So in terms of a community event, I'd have to identify that as what I'm most proud of. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Riley.
Yeah, I'd have to say that, so when I quit corporate some years ago and wanted to open a small business, I thought, I wanted to do it in Corraville. So I think that, you know, taught me a couple things. One, it's really let me enter, so I have wine and chocolates and coffee shop. Not that chocolates or coffee are essential to a community, but some people have found them essential. So I have great customers who come in all the time. It's really allowed me to interact with the community, hear about things that they're interested in, in social issues and local issues. And it has also allowed me to learn on the front, firsthand, what it takes to get a small business opened in Corraville, you know, what rules and regulations I have to follow and how do I make it happen. So I do want to say too, that the shared payment plan that Lori mentioned is excellent program. So glad, proud of Corraville to see a plan like that come through. So, but I'd say my small business is what I'm most proud of.
Okay. And Ms. Foster.
Well, one of the things that I want to make sure everybody knows is that all of the work that is done on the Corraville City Council is done as a team. We work together with our, with each other, we work together with our city staff. And so none of the things that have happened in the community, the progress that we have made, none of that is the work of just one person. It is the result of a team coming together and bringing a vision to life. And I think we are extremely fortunate in Corraville to have great staff and great elected officials making these things happen. As far as one thing that I have done, I would say, you know, I have similar experience with that council member Nguyen has in working every day with individuals who are struggling at the Domestic Violence Intervention Program. And just, you know, being able to engage in that work is very fulfilling to me.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you all. All right, so we will now move to our final question and then move on to closing statements. So the final question will be, what is one issue we have not discussed this evening that you think is important for Corraville? And we will begin with Ms. Nguyen.
The one, okay, no one issue that we haven't talked about this evening is racial and economic justice. I know that Corraville is not the only community that is facing that, but, you know, no one in our community should ever have to look over their shoulder when they leave their house. And people deserve, people who live in our community deserve to live safe, healthy, and dignified lives regardless of race or class. And in order to ensure that, we need to increase financial support and vital community resources like human services, agency, nonprofit organization, and community group, working to reduce poverty, racism, violence, and injustice in our community. We also need to lead by example by committing, you know, to a living wage, not only in the city of Corraville, but also asking businesses who come to our community to work to adhere to that. Thank you.
Mr. Knudsen.
This is another tough question because there's been a lot of issues we really haven't touched on that much. I think one of the key ones is diversity. We haven't really talked about increasing diversity in our community very much, racial, economic, et cetera, sexual orientation, I'd like to promote that. My experience with the staff, I've praised them many times, and will sure continue to do that. I think we can continue to diversify our staff and our police force too, as well. So that's, that's, that's one of the key issues I'd like to see addressed. And I don't think we've talked too much about some of the infrastructure challenges that the city faces. I'll touch on it in my closing statements, but certainly the older or original Corraville area has some infrastructure challenges that I think the city will need to deal with in the next four years. Thank you.
Ms. Riley.
Yeah, so there's certainly a lot of issues that we need to talk about. I think probably on the top of my list might be the living wage. I know that we've pushed wages up a little bit in Corraville, but I would like to have some open conversations with businesses and citizens of Corraville to understand what that wage level should look like, what we need given the cost of housing and other expenses here in Corraville. Where is that, where should that balance be? And then how do we drive that into the community? So I think understanding better where that wage level should be is an issue that I'd like to spend some time considering. Thank you.
Ms. Foster.
Thank you. So I know that we have mentioned affordable housing a few times in the comments that we have made. the comments that we have made. But I think that that is is something we we need to continue to spend time discussing. I'm really proud that our current council has has really made affordability a central part of the conversations that we have had when we talk about new development. We have done a lot as far as offering down payment assistance, forgivable loans, and funding for improvements. I think the next phase of this conversation needs to focus on having housing in our community that is attainable for individuals who make forty percent or below the area median income.
All right. And lastly, Ms. Goodrich.
Thank you. The last four years since we've been, I've been on council, we've had four new department heads come online, and we've had retirements. And so we have four new department superintendents. And we have a new transit routes that with no cost added, but we have good transfers now with our other cities and the university. We have an unbiased policing ordinance and the Access Center, which is the Guideling Center, has opened in Johnson County that we have a part of. We have many new developments and the economic growth. And I'm just so proud of the arena and the great Green State Fieldhouse and the University of Iowa hospitals and clinics that are continuing to develop here. Thanks.
Thank you all. All right. So now we will move on to closing statements. So each candidate will now have two minutes to make a closing statement. And we will begin with the candidates for city council. And we will begin with Ms. Riley.
All right. So again, I want to thank everybody for taking some time to listen to us tonight. I think we had some good discussion on some good topics. So I want to leave you with, you know, stressing what my three top goals are for this city council and the future of Corralville, which is to provide financially stable and environmentally friendly development in Corralville, working with businesses on creating a community where we have great jobs at decent wages where people can raise a successful family. I also want to focus on support services that we have in Corralville of how to, if we have support services in place, how do people best take advantage of them and have a way to assist people in getting to the services that they may need as they arrive in the community. And of course, I love the outdoor feel of Corralville and everything we do with our Parks and Recreation Division and what we do with the the youth athletic leagues and all those things just lead to an amazing place that Corralville is. So I want to commend everybody who's had a part in that. So I do want to be part of Corralville. I definitely would appreciate your vote. So on November 2, vote for Cindy. Thank you.
Mr. Knudsen.
I too would thank all the other candidates and League of Women Voters for this forum. Since submitting my papers and announcing my candidacy candidacy to run for council less than one month ago, as as you've heard, I've initiated meetings with many of the city's leaders. I've been asking them their thoughts about the opportunities and challenges they face in their respective areas. Well, this effort remains a work in progress. I've already identified some opportunities and challenges the city may face over the next four years. Starting with the opportunities, I would like to see the city help with the private development of the area south and west of First Avenue intersection. This area extends to Clear Creek and to the railroad tracks and would greatly benefit from a near complete renovation. As a UIC employee, I know this area would be a very, very attractive location to live and believe there are also great opportunities to have private businesses there as well. I believe the Parks and Rec Department has the opportunity to partner with the school system to approve our indoor swimming facilities at the rec center. I think we have opportunities to utilize solar energy to help power our wastewater treatment facility, which would provide substantial savings to the city in the long run. I believe there's an opportunity to upgrade our water treatment facility such that all residents can have high quality water, not just those of us who can afford water softeners. Some of the challenges I have identified to date, as I just mentioned, there are a number of infrastructure challenges in in original Corralville, including water and sewer lines that need replacement and also upgrading our electrical grid to make it more resistant to storm damage. Also, our police force has been consistently understaffed and continue to have difficulty hiring new officers. So in conclusion, I firmly believe my professional experiences, my ability to make data-driven decisions, and my long track record of public service make me an outstanding candidate for Corralville City Council. I'm asking you that you support me and give me one of your three votes on November 2. Thanks again for your time and for this opportunity.
Ms. Nguyen.
Thank you. Thank you again to the League of Women Voters of Johnson County for hosting this wonderful conversation tonight and for the work that they are continue to to do to empower voters in our community. And thank you to my fellow candidates. With one year under my belt on the Corralville City Council, I am excited at the prospect of serving my community for a full term of four years, and I am eager to continue to work and build upon the progress made so far. I hope that last year has provided evidence that I showed up, I I listened, I am not afraid of hard work. I also do my homework, and I do not hesitate to speak up and offer new and different perspective when that matters. I am finding ways to collaborate with my colleague, with city staff, and with community members to find solution that improve quality of life in Corralville. I have always stayed true to who I am from the moment from the moment that I chose to call Corralville home to present day. And that has been my guiding star in everything that I do, whether taking care of my loved ones, offering helping hands to my neighbors, or serving my community in many different capacities. My pledge to my community is to continue working to build a better Corralville that works for everyone. And this means centering and valuing our most vulnerable neighbors, focus on their experiences, their needs, their dreams, and their voices in every decision that we make as a city. And if you share my vision for a better Corralville, I humbly ask for your vote on or before November 2. Thank you so much.
All right. And Ms. Goodrich.
Thank you. And I too want to thank everyone on this call. Thank you to those who tuned in and are listening to us and for the League of Women Voters who set this up. Thank you Duha. I, the city has maintained services throughout and are continuing to resolve challenges with the COVID-19 pandemic. And I'm proud of that candor spirit and will continue to ensure that policies and ordinances are up to date and benefit all members of the community. And I look forward to working on new developments and Biscuit Creek Restoration Project and Clear Creek Mitigation Bank. I'd like to fix some of our trails, just repair and renew. And the I-80 First Avenue Interchange is going to be an exciting process of making that into a diverging diamond. And then just basic street and pavement repairs that are ongoing. I believe in public safety, strong infrastructure, and continued economic growth are essential to Corralville's well-being. And I've served on the Parks and Rec Committee as well as have been a council liaison and had appointments to a number of boards and commissions. And this has led me to attend and graduate from the Iowa League of Cities Municipal Leadership Academy and the Certified Elected Municipal Official. And I just have enjoyed all those things. I attend meetings and volunteer for activities in the area and just like doing that because it keeps me in touch with people and current issues. And I love Corralville and I'm passionate about Corralville and being the city that everyone feels safe and successful and proud to be a citizen. Thank you for this evening.
All right. And now our mayoral candidate, Ms. Foster.
Well, thank you again to the League of Women Voters. Thank you to my fellow candidates and thank you to everyone who is watching at home. I, you know, this this forum is a great example of why I do find it to be such a privilege and a joy to serve the citizens of Corralville. We had a fantastic discussion tonight, and we're so fortunate to have individuals who are willing to step up and serve our community. We have accomplished a lot in Corralville, and I am very proud of the progress we have made. But we are by no means finished. We still have a lot of work to do on issues such as affordable housing, access to social services, racial and economic justice, and and many more issues that are facing our community. And I hope to continue this work as your next mayor. So I hope to earn your vote on or before November 2. Thank you.
Thank you all. We would like you to, we would like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and that sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. Remember to visit vote411.org for more election information. Remember that the election will be held on November 2. Please vote. Thank you to the candidates and to Coral Vision TV staff. The recording of this forum will be available on the Facebook page of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County or on the website of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County at L W V J C dot org. It will also be available on Coral Vision TV. Check the website for program schedules. Thank you so much.